He started, I started asking that all about that. It was fascinating what you knew about that, I mean, because you lived there.
Yeah, I see the same thing.
So they moved back down here from Virginia after he retired. She's living there for two or three years.
I have a question. I've got an email recommendation which I sent in. I said bid sales, when people are working.
I'm trying to get them to come down.
And I said, why?
I have to sign it, Keith.
There was another separate submission for you. You passed on that.
Call a meeting to order. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and the city in which we live. You guided us this afternoon as we make it to Suits. Amen.
Amen.
This is a work session for the city of Noonan. There's one item on the agenda today. I have a conflict with that item because of my family's involvement in the ownership of the property. So I am going to recuse myself at this point and ask Mayor Tim Corretco to run the meeting. Thank you very much. And I think that Councilmember Knowles also has a comment.
Yes, I would like to be recused for a family relationship in the property. If you'll excuse me, please.
Of course, thank you. The whole work session is kind of fairly new for the city of Noonan, so I'd like to welcome everybody to the city of Noonan work session. The mayor and council, we recently adopted an ordinance that allows for work sessions and rezoning and annexations. Today is one of those work sessions. It's not a public hearing, therefore, we will not have, there will not be an opportunity for public input. I don't see anybody here, but in case anybody shows up, that's why I'm reading this. City staff will present the applicant's petition and will answer any questions from council. Members of the council will also have an opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or the applicant's representative. No votes will be taken at today's work session. This is the annexation request for annex 2022 tag 06. It's 163.61 acres located off Green Top Road. Tax parcel number 0855086001, 0855107002, 0855086003, and the southern portion of 0855107003, requesting zoning of the PDR. All right, I'm going to open this up now to Ms. Donovan. Thank you for your diligence and the staff for keeping up with us and keeping us up to date.
Thank you very much. I think you all are pretty aware of the Green Top Road annexation. It's been before you all before, but it is back. And as Councilmember Corretco stated, it's 163 plus or minus acres located on Green Top Road. And the purpose of this annexation request is to ask to be able to develop 300 single-family lots. The tracks are currently zoned RC, which is rural conservation in the county, and the applicant is requesting a planned development residential PDR zoning designation. As you all know, PDR is a zoning that is based on a specific plan, density, elevations, and dimensional requirements that is requested by the applicant. So it will be based on the plan that is provided. The request involves four different tax parcels and ties into the city through the Calumet Development. If you look at the first slide up there, you can see that the area that's kind of highlighted in the greenish teal color is where this would be located. And you can see where it is a budding Calumet. It does cross a railroad track, but annexation law allows you to annex across a railroad track. So that's where this is going to be located. If you'll go to the next slide, please. The site is currently heavily wooded and undeveloped with the exception of a small block building that has been on the site for years. The petitioner is proposing a density of 2.04 units per acre, a minimum lot size of 8,200 square feet, and an average lot size of 11,284 square feet. The amenities will include a pool, a clubhouse, a pickleball complex, playgrounds, a dog park, and walking trails throughout the development. And you can see the little walking trails are shown by the yellow hash lines on this plan. And the amenities areas is up to the north of the project. You can see it sitting up there. And then they're leaving in the ponds and so forth that are on the site. In terms of the, if you'll go to the next slide, please. The minimum floor area is being proposed at 1,600 square feet, and the average square footages are going to be as follows. So they have three pod types. The first is a ranch pod. There'll be 65 homes that are ranch pods. It's going to be 1,860 square feet. Traditional pod, which is 129 homes, of 2,640 square feet. And estate pods, which will be 106 homes at 3,004 square feet. And then in addition, there'll be three to four different floor plans, with each plan having three to four different elevations and color combinations. And the sales prices are going to range from 392,150 to 527,190. And we could go through some slides up here, and it'll show you kind of the look of the different homes that they're proposing. And then we've got one more after this, and those are going to be your ranch-style single-floor homes. And if you'll go to that next one here. So this slide depicts the location of the various lots. The estate pods are going to be shown in pink, so they're up towards Green Top Road. The traditional pods are going to be shown in purple, which are kind of along the middle of the property. And then you have the yellow pods, which are the ranch pods, and they're more on the western side of the property. So in terms of density, if you'll go to that next slide, please. The unit numbers in that area range from .46 units per acre, and that's going to be located in the county, all the way up to 4.18 acres, which is in the city. And again, the applicant is seeking 2.04 acres. Since this is an annexation request, as you all know, the county was notified in accordance with state law, and they did object to this annexation. As such, we had to go through the arbitration process, and an arbitration panel came forth with 26 conditions being placed on this development. And those conditions are going to be recorded and in effect for a two-year period through February 9 of 2025. I'm not going to read those conditions. They're listed in your packet, and you can see all 26 of those. In addition, the applicant has also offered four conditions. Those are also provided in your packet. And basically, those deal mostly with provision of water sewer, the acceptance of all of the arbitration conditions for the entire term of the development except for the water sewer provision, and the requirement of a developer's agreement between, being executed between the developer, the city, and Noonan Utilities. Staff also has three suggested conditions if you decide to move forward with accepting this annexation, and those would be that the project will be consistent with the concept plan, density, project data, amenities, including the pickleball complex and elevations provided as part of the application, that the average square footage for each pod will be as follows: the ranch pods, 1860, the traditional pod, 2640, and then the estate pod, 3,004. And that the city of Noonan will not issue a permit for land disturbing activities until such time as Cowhewida County has reviewed and approved the plans for the development to the extent that Cowhewida County has jurisdiction, and that's primary related to street connections on Green Top Road. The planning commission did hear this at a public hearing on September 12, and they voted six to nothing to recommend denial of the request. And those draft minutes have been included in your packet as well. And that's kind of a high-level overview of this project. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have. And we have the applicant here to answer any questions you have as well. Yes, sir.
Who was missing from the planning commission? I think you said it was a six oh vote?
That's correct. It was Chris Hunt. He was in Israel.
Who?
Chris Hunt.
Oh, yeah.
Just a question, just a comment. The location map at the start was much better than in the past, where I can actually see where the property is. So that's good.
Yes, sir. I will let our mapper know, and we can prepare those accordingly.
So I guess I'll start. Tracy, can you clarify as to the perception that with staff suggestion, that there is no way that this project could increase from 300,000 up, correct? In other words, so it's 300,000, excuse me, 300 homes?
Yes.
And it's not going to go to 350, and it's going to go to the 3, 400 after the fact?
So everything is, first off, you have these conditions in place, that was with arbitration. So those conditions, it's set for that period of time, which is the two years. But they're also willing to stipulate, as part of their conditions, that all those conditions would remain in effect with the exception of the one regarding the water sewer provision for the term of the development.
Yeah. The reason I ask the question is because I think there's some misinformation out there regarding the possibility of exceeding that amount. Also, when it comes to the, this is mostly for the builder, your starting point is a 392, and I'm going to assume, knowing enough about building to be dangerous, that that's just the entry level. You have add-ons, et cetera. So what is the range, let's start at 392, for example, with all the other additional amenities or add-ons that could be enhanced the home? What do you see the price range of those going, starting from the bottom all the way through the, from the 48 houses, two-story, the 40-foot, two-story, then the ranches? What's that price range at the highest?
Do I need to respond with name and address and all that?
Yes, for the record, yes.
My name is Rick Martin. I'm director of land acquisition for Polty Homes. My address is 304 T. Rose Court, Griffin, Georgia, 30223. And the first comment I'd like to make and answer your question is, we've been in this process for a couple of years now.
Right.
And those were the prices that we've already left that. The trains left the station. They're going to be north of there, and where they settle will be very likely in the low fours in the starting range. And we've got a similar project that we're building not far from this project, where the ranch-style homes, we already are forecasting, and some of those with the amenities or with the options is high as 700,000. So it's hard to describe, to give you the specificity you're looking for, I think, because the things that are available for almost all those homes are sunrooms, additional build-out requirements to make rooms suitable for specific uses, like sewing rooms and playrooms, et cetera. In the ranch-style home, we offer a finished loft that is accessed by a stairway inside the home and extends out over the garage. So those homes could be significantly larger. So it...
Yeah, I know you can't be specific, and I'm really not asking, trying to zero in on a specific number and a, you know, a fixed range, but it's a ballpark, you know, a working number.
It'll be low fours to probably six.
I have a bunch of questions, so I don't want to dominate, but I'm just going to go through this packet as, is that okay with you guys?
Go ahead, Willie.
Jump in. All right, cool.
We'll cut you off.
All right, very good. So going to, this may be a question for...
Maybe that's why you're going on. Could you just say what page you're on, just so we can follow along?
Well, I'm on page nine, where the 27 or 25 are proffered, and it moves into the applicant's proffered conditions. And I think what I've noticed is these, this issue or conversation around the sewage and the public water. So do you, Mr. George, you want to address that? And so kind of clear that up, maybe how that started, maybe what's not understood on our part and perception-wise? Does that make any sense? I'm trying to make sense of my question, but...
I'll try, but somebody just object if this isn't responsive. I'm George Rosenzweig, 75 Jackson Street, Noonan. The concept here that we're proffering is that when the annexation panel conditions expire, the project will be served by Noonan Utilities, and we won't be able to get a certificate of occupancy unless that takes place. So what we're asking is that we be in a position to close, begin clearing, and so forth, but again, that no houses could be sold, no certificates of occupancy, until the utility piece is in place. Now, I can dial back the history of the utilities. It's a long and kind of torturous one, but do you want me to take it farther back?
I'm going to ask, you guys want a Reader's Digest version of that?
I mean, I understand it because...
I mean, I do too, but I'm just thinking for, like, for the record, so to speak.
For anybody listening?
I don't think we need to go through all of it.
Can you just give us the Reader's Digest version, maybe?
Okay. Originally, the county had encouraged us in terms of developing the property in the county. The Water and Sewer Authority came to us and proposed sewer line across the property to shorten their distance, connecting from their present termination point to a line that they were purchasing from Noonan Utilities on Highway 29. We granted the easement. Fast forward, the county didn't rezone. There is a county easement across the property, but we understand that it's important to the city and city council that this property be served with utilities from Noonan Utilities, and that's what we intend to do. We have a will serve letter that we've provided in the packet.
And may I interrupt?
No, I'm just, I'll pause, and you, if you want to piggyback on that quick.
Thank you, Mr. George, and thank you, Rick, for attending. I just want to make sure, I know at one time it was a proposal that county would provide to Noonan Utilities, then Noonan Utilities provides. And I think my understanding is that's out the window. It's purely going to be Noonan Utilities.
That's 100% right. That was a proposal. There have been a lot of things proposed on this, but that didn't work out.
Right. But you can build the houses, but they just can't get a certificate of occupancy sold until...
February.
February 9, 2025.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
Back to Mr. Gill. Thank you.
Hey, I just went through this, so I just thought, a lot of this, some of it I understand, but some of it I need refresh on. So let's go to section two, revised annexation application.
What page are you on?
And I'm on page 21 of 99. Well, I'm starting there, but I'm going to go to, really on page 27. This is, I believe, your letter, correct? And what I found interesting was that, I think it's important to note that this particular piece of property is the comprehensive land use plan and land use plan map update by the county, not the city, by the county, as being identified as a property for growth priority. Now, to me, that says a lot. So you want to, I mean, and that encompasses around the city, and this is identified as that by the county and as we move forward and growth-wise.
Yes. You all, I know, are familiar, because you go through the same process periodically. The Georgia Department of Community Affairs requires that you update your comprehensive land use plan. This was done while we were in the process of trying to get our property rezoned. The county redid their comprehensive land use plan. They identified our property as growth priority, which is defined as a density of up to four units per acre, and ours is just a tiny fraction over two. So it's about half of what's provided for in the county comprehensive plan update.
I also think it's worth noting in this, unrelated to this particular project, but there have been other projects started on the, in District One and out budding up to the county that certainly follow in, fall into this growth priority category, i.e. what was built out on Poplar Road, et cetera. So there's really no distinguishing kind of difference aside from just location of the development. Moving right along.
So, and maybe this is a question, maybe just going to jump in real fast.
Yeah, go ahead.
In that vein, Ms. Donovan, and I know this is a county question, so I don't think, expect you to know it, but the development on Poplar, what was the, what's, do you have any idea or ballpark what the density is out there?
No, sir, I'm sorry.
Totally expected.
And that's where you're on Poplar. Some of that's pretty dense out there.
Well, I'm talking about that new development that's out there by the hospital.
Yeah, it's, it's dense.
It's dense.
Yeah. And it is, it's very dense. I just kind of, to put it in perspective, if it's okay there...
You can't calculate by looking at it, because you've got all the other stuff at county, so we don't see that flood line, but it's, the houses are very close together in this lot.
Oh, clearly, yeah. Yes.
So it's kind of a similar, if not more dense than this project is even?
Yeah. So the only difference is location, 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 and real estate is, seems to be the term. Going now to page 47, for the development agreement between, among Green Top Road LLC, Polty, and Noonan Utilities. Actually, can I just jump, just hit the pause button on this one? Do you have anything currently related to traffic? Because that's a heavy topic conversation relating to that. So do you have something that can help us with perception of traffic and what's going to happen?
Yes. We've carefully studied the traffic, because, of course, that's a hot-button issue with this project. I was trying on my way down here to think how many different hearings and public meetings I've been to about this project, and traffic comes up repeatedly. We've had it studied twice by one traffic engineering firm, and then we had their work pure reviewed by another traffic engineering firm. Now, I have here, somewhere, I have slides that I can put it up on the screen if I can find them, and I also have hard copies. Can I give this to Megan and see if she can get it up? And then I'll start talking and explaining as we go.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And kind of, if you could, in the back of your mind while you're going through this, from when those studies were done, has there been, and do you think, any appreciable changes in the traffic since that time? You know, because it's been a bit of time.
Yeah. Actually, one change is the study you're going to see studies the development at 366 units. And actually, the study we have, well, we didn't restudy it. We only have 300 units. So actually, the traffic, boy, you're fast. Okay.
Good job, Ms. Megan.
So, the way this works, there's going to be two slides you're going to be looking at. The first one shows no build versus build. And to refresh you, the way this will work is there's going to be certain traffic that's already on the road or that's going to be on the road, where Green Top Road connects with Highway 29, regardless of whether we're built or not. That's the no-build scenario. And then this is the build scenario. And then what it does is break down the different intersections, and it breaks them down into AM and PM, and then it grades each intersection, AM and PM. And you can see that now, under the no-build, the intersections are functioning well. I've highlighted here the southbound Hal Jones Roundabout during the PM rush hour. And what that is, is people coming in on Green Top Road, turning south to go to the country club, or going straight through to go to somewhere like Arbor Springs. It's presently functioning at a D. If we build, the function will become an E, and the delay will be an increase of about eight seconds is all. All the rest of the intersections function well, whether it's build at 366, and again, now we're at 300, or whether it's no-build. And so what we did then, we asked them to go back and do a second follow-up study, the traffic engineers, looking at what this would amount to in terms of cars. Because it's one thing to say, okay, I want to get into the roundabout, 1,001, 1,002, 1,003, 1,004, 1,005, 6, 7, 8, I can go. And whether that's a real material delay to get back to the country club or Arbor Springs, could, oh, I've got this now. So what we did then is look at this in terms of the number of cars. And the way this works, here's the original study, and here's the alternate. The 100 units is what we're entitled to already. And one of the troubles that we have when we come to these public hearings is people want to compare nothing to what we're asking to do, whereas as a matter of right, even the county admits that we have the right to do 100 units now. So comparing the two then, if you compare the 366 units, the difference, if we take two that we're entitled to already, that's five cars per hour going south, 24 an hour going straight. So that's about one every 30 seconds. And then we also asked them to study what would the effect be of our proposed correction, which is adding a right-turn lane to the roundabout, so that when you're coming south on 29, there at the gas station, the service station, you just have a right-turn lane to get these right-turn people out of there. That would actually improve the intersection to a C. So this is the actual traffic data. It is, somehow, the message has just gotten lost, and it's become this idea of every morning at 8 o'clock, it's going to be like the start of the Indy 500, where every house in the development is trying to get out on 29 at the same time. But in fact, they're going five different directions. We have an age-targeted area that's going to be over 55, where people aren't going during that time of day. Spread out over the whole day, you're talking about a difference of about eight seconds or a car every 30 seconds. And then just one final thing, and I know I'm kind of rambling here, I hope this is responsive, but this idea of the roads and the responsibility for the roads, it's gotten kind of old, this idea that we in the city of Noonan don't pay county taxes, and if we want to do a development that's going to require county road improvements, that our property taxes and our splosh money, and the splosh money that comes from businesses that we generate and attract to Noonan, shouldn't legitimately be able to go for road improvements. We are contributing every penny, this $500,000 is what the county said was our fair share at annexation. Some of you all were there. The county said our fair share should be, we thought it was too high. We were cut from 366 lots to 300. They didn't cut the 500,000, but we're going to bite the bullet and do it. But we think it's our fair share. We think the traffic does increase, but not tremendously. And we think most of the traffic issue out there is a result of permissions and grants that the county has already permitted. It's a state highway, it's a county highway, and if they think it needs improving, they can do it.
That study, what is the age of that study? How recent was it?
The first one... Um, the first one was twenty-one, when we filed, the second one, twenty-two.
Because I know that that roundabout itself, the state has done some of those, where they have the small roundabout based on how much property they have, and they're planning on going back and improving, like they keep saying they're gonna do it touring, and it requires a lot more land to make a regular, normal roundabout versus those little mini roundabouts that they create. So I assume that that's what, I mean, that's part of what's gonna happen at that intersection.
If, if the county really thinks this is necessary, but yeah, I mean, they've thrown numbers around that require, that involve condemnation and acquiring property out there and so forth to make a very grand roundabout. But yet, if you drive through there and you look for things like, uh, signs that there have been car collisions in there, things like broken taillights and stuff like that, you don't see any indication of it.
So but to his point, this study's almost two years old though, right? November of twenty-one?
This part is a year old. And it may not be quite that. I can get you, they, I sent a letter, I mean, if it's important, I can get it. I sent a letter to Ms. Donovan that included that, but, uh, the time has just, you know, twenty-three's almost over. It might have been more recently than I thought.
And the forecast with lots is twenty percent less.
Yeah, and the lots are twenty percent less also.
Paul, I got a question. I can wait till you get more questions or something. They triggered, they said, do you have an age-targeted part of that subdivision?
Yes.
That's expected to be fifty-five and up, required to be fifty-five and up?
It's not, go ahead, Ray.
The distinction is that the targeted, uh, buyer for that particular product would be, uh, above fifty-five, but because it's probably a question that warrants a further comment, a further comment about what we're trying to build here, uh, from ten thousand feet. Pulte nationwide has adopted, uh, a concept of aging in place that we're doing all over Georgia, and it's already being done here in Noonan right now in other communities. We've studied this, where folks will, uh, buy a home, raise their children. Those children will leave and go to college and maybe get a job and whatever. Those, the existing home in which they were reared gets, uh, the occupants being the parents will then downsize, often targeting the homes that we refer to as both age-targeted and age-restricted. Ultimately, what we've seen all over the country is the children will come back and re-occupy the same house that they were born in. We are building communities just like this. This is why we got real excited about this site. Because this, this PDR zoning allows us to build three types of homes that are very specific to the very specific buyers, and they never have to leave the community. That's already happening here in Noonan. You may know of folks that have had that happen in their community, but we're aware of it. And this is, this is why we got real excited about this. The, the reason we, and I happen to live in Sun City Peachtree in an age-restricted community. The reason we don't do age-restricted in this product is because somebody could, in the early fifties or late forties, could want to, uh, downsize, and that would preclude them in an age-restricted product where it would not with an age-targeted product. That's the distinction. Sorry to go on, but.
Yeah, because that's, even in the youngest expected part of that, this is not starter homes where they're gonna move, fill up a house and move on. They're gonna, the number of people in the household go down over time typically, right?
Yeah, we, we've even seen where they'll be in what we've referred to as the estate section, for lack of a better term, move from the estate section into the traditional section just because the children aren't utilizing the home in the way they did originally.
Okay, great.
That's a good point.
Well, I just want to make a comment on that is, we see really, uh, Summer Grove is an example of that type of property you're building, because there are people who have the homes, and now they're looking to downsize, and they're choosing to stay with, inside the Summer Grove community because there's, there's layers and, uh, square footages that are, that are mid-size and down to, you know, probably a click over twelve hundred, thirteen hundred square feet. So the concept is, 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 well, it's not, is not unique, but it's, it's where it's going. I wanted to ask you, I'm, I'm familiar with you from, from the Florida market, and what I've noticed, and I would like your, your take, as to a development like this, the value added to the community, in other words, the collateral fact that this adds to enhance, i.e. that area, that's, that's out of town, et cetera, the whole concept of Noonan. So can you maybe, what you've seen in your experience?
Yeah, I can, I can tell you with specificity on that point that, uh, we, we were approved to build a Noonan Del Webb five, ten minutes from here. And, and we, we didn't get approved on our first go-round. We came back six months later. We made some changes to the site, uh, the site plan, some other things, and we, we got approval for that. That's, that's ten minutes from here. And one of the things we missed is we didn't do a, a good job in that presentation to the county explaining the economic impact of what these homeowners have on the community. We did a pretty thorough study using a group that, with whom we've worked before, and that analysis. And they were amazed, uh, number one, the, the, uh, the, the homes that are age-targeted in this community most of the time will not have children involved in, in that occupancy. So the, the burden on schools is less than it might be in a more conventional subdivision. The second thing is they've got a higher level of average disposable income than the traditional homeowners do because oftentimes they're moving toward retirement or, or are actually in retirement. And the other benefits are, depending on the number of homes, were, were quite remarkable. And it's one of the things that the county got their head wrapped around in approval for the Del Webb that's been, being done up on State Route thirty-four.
Uh, thank you. Tracy.
Can I make just one clarification here?
Yes.
You all are asking about the dates on the traffic study. So the initial study was done in November of twenty-twenty-one, and the follow-up was in July of twenty-twenty-two.
So, so fairly recent, I mean.
Ms. Tracy, is there a way that you can text upstairs to try to find out how many units per acre at the Poplar Road, that area?
A Poplar Road?
Yes, is there?
I'll try to get one of my staff to do that.
I'm very curious at what it came in at. Sure.
That is a good point, like I was just saying, it's dense.
Pardon?
I'm sorry, what?
It is, it's a dense development, but location, location, location.
But you also have to take into consideration what the size of the land is.
What size of what?
Well, you can put all those houses close together, but if they have twenty or thirty acres all around it.
And part of that, part of that, its weapons is unbuildable is one reason they do that.
Well, just like the lake is unbuildable.
Another part of that whole thing though, in the equation, that was the transportation. Look at the Poplar Road, it's right by the interstate, and they got a good amount of traffic coming through there. Everybody transiting between the interstate and going out, so.
It's really not any, any, any different. It's, it's a two-lane road. Poplar's a two-lane road, spilling into a, you know, three lanes. And, uh, and quite frankly, you have, not only do you have one development on be the, whatever side, one on the right side of the road and one on the left side of the road that are both very, very dense, creating more, and then you have two roundabouts there as well.
Not, not living there, not knowing, but it seems to me a lot, a lot of people come out of that subdivision, and they're not going to twenty-nine. They're going to the interstate, and they're gonna go back to the industrial park. Because, because they don't, they can avoid twenty-nine that way, I think.
May, may I make an additional comment about traffic?
Yes.
There are sixty-eight homes here, so, um, slightly over twenty percent of the homes here are gonna be in that age-targeted area. And one of the things that we have a very difficult time explaining to folks, we've got real data for, for this buyer right here in Georgia. We've built four of them. We're about to do two more. Uh, we've done over a hundred all over the country. And one of the things that traditional traffic engineers have a hard time getting their head around is the use for that traffic. They, when we were doing the, the deal up here on State Route thirty-four, the comment was made, uh, I, I've made reference to the fact that I live in a community that has thirty-four hundred homes, and I've never seen more than four cars at the traffic light. The comment was made, I don't believe that. I did time-lapse photography on, in two months during workday and the weekends on, for, on two different days during two different times of the week, and did that time-lapse photography and produced it in order for, for, for the engineer at the county to see that there was, in fact, that there was never more than three cars at that traffic light. These folks shop, um, run errands, and do things at a different time of the day than the rest of the general commu, general, um, neighborhood will. And that's a fact. Uh, they, they do, they do things in the morning that, uh, that, that you don't have to, that you don't have to accomplish later in the day. And, uh, and they just, their, their driving trends aren't during the peak hours in the morning or in the afternoon. I think we finally demonstrated that on that project, and I think you could expect that here from that particular pod.
Well, I can attest to that.
Sixty-five.
And, and kind of, I guess, another thing that I just had was, as we're going up, you know, pre-top twenty-nine, they just opened Publix up there, so it's not like everybody's gonna be coming down here to go shopping, grocerying, and, you know, some of the services are moving that way. We will need some of the traffic congestion and outlets that, um, just to shift gears real quick, um, talking about the, and we're still talking about the covenant. Still a ten percent rental, no more than ten percent rental on the, uh?
I think that's what we committed to, yes, sir. And the reason for that isn't necessarily to have a ten percent volume. It's for folks that when they move and they relocate, they want to lease their home for a period of time while, while they either build or sell or whatever. So it's really provisions for the existing, uh, it's not to have a rental base in the community.
Yeah.
Yeah, most people at that price point are entry-level or not buying them as rentals for return on investment. I can assure you of that. I want to, I was frantically looking for my other page of questions, but I don't know where I went. Could I say the dog ate it? But I don't have a dog. But that being said, George, is there anything related to the, um, what the arbitration board summed up as well as the, the court case that we, that is relevant with, that we need to know specifically based upon some of our questioning? And you would think would be, help us in our decision?
So much of what we've.
Wow, can I quote you on that? Salient, salient points was.
So much of what we've talked about here, see, these are in the deed covenants, and things like the lot number, a lot of it is just planning. You'll follow this ordinance, you'll follow that ordinance, you'll follow the other ordinance, kind of thing. But the lot numbers and the setbacks and so forth are all set out here. I could go through them. I don't know.
No, I'm not asking you to go through them, because I think we've been through them and read through them. So, uh, I was just trying to recall my notes as to, uh, was there anything in reference to that? Unless you guys wanting to go through these, I don't, I don't need that.
I've seen it, but that's fine.
We've seen it, and I've, I've been to the arbitration as well as, as the court case as well, so, and they were really pounded upon. The only thing that I guess I'm, I think we're, I'm clear, and I, you guys clear on this Noonan Utilities and the utilities aspect of things after the two, two years at February ninth on twenty-twenty-five? You're clear, we're all clear on that will be.
They can't get a occupancy permit which would allow them to close on the sale of a house.
And then also in the letter that, from, uh, Jason Garrett of Pulte Homes of, of the things that they are willing to do and will do and have to do in order to accommodate Noonan Utilities to, to be put in there. Right? I'm just trying to get this stuff on the record. Question?
No.
Answer.
So they found it, and it's two point seven five units per acre.
So we have two point seven five, and no one said a word when that.
Any, any idea, one last question I should have asked you before, but any, any idea how many units they're building out there?
Five hundred and forty-seven.
Five forty-seven.
Five forty-seven?
On a hundred and ninety-nine acres. This is information that has been.
Five forty-seven.
Pulled off of, uh, their current development map. They have a map in the county website that shows their current projects, so I just went to their plat, and it says one ninety-nine acres, five hundred forty-seven.
Okay, thank you. I have a question, Mayor Portem, or actually a statement. I think in the big picture of this, within our community, within our citizens, our citizens are very upset about how many apartment complexes have gone up. Very few, if any, single-family homes. We are short of single-family homes. Now we have an opportunity to have single-family homes, and there's a plan. In the past, and I've said this before, there wasn't a plan, and I think that's one of the reasons why it was rejected. But now there's a plan. Growth is coming. Everybody complains about growth, but people are coming here because there's a reason, quality of life. This is a great place to live. It's a great place for our kids, our children, and our children's children to come back to. And we're proving it, and it's time and time again. So that's what I look at. People can talk about traffic, but as long as you're growing, you're gonna get more and more traffic. So very difficult to control traffic when people want to come here and grow. I moved here to this community thirty-eight years ago, nine thousand people in this town, no traffic. Everybody found out about, about what a great place this was. They're all coming here, and they're continuing to come here. And I've been doing this for thirty-four years, and I remember when I first started doing this, everybody said, you gotta stop, you gotta stop this. You gotta stop the growth. And I gave a dog and pony show to a, a group, and I asked everybody, they were complaining about the growth, and I asked them, how many, show of hands, moved here since nineteen eighty-nine, nineteen ninety? Two-thirds of the room raised their hand, and I told them, had we stopped the growth then, everyone who raised their hand would have never been allowed to live here. So. But I think the key is smart growth. This is a good, great product, price range, it's quality. And I think if we continue to grow in a smart way, and I think this is proven it. I mean, just a hair over two units per acre, uh, price range. Then you look over there at Poplar, two point seven five units, five hundred forty-seven. Not a word from the county residents, so, okay, I'm off my soapbox.
Am I permitted to ask chief concerning his letter? Yeah, um, as far as safety and delivering the services that, that the city is to provide. So I just want to reference your, your letter and how you stated what'll be, and I know this, these are just, they're projections based upon maybe worst-case scenario or whatever. So, and I know you, in, in your letter, you stated may, may require two additional officers will be needed to manage the impact of this development. So can you just kind of walk through that letter and just briefly, your, your understand, or, uh, view?
Well, typically, as we get those impact studies or requests where we put them in at one project versus another project on the, we have to continually look at it. So it's, as the city continues to grow, as, as we approve projects, the city approves projects, that adds to it. So, yes, as this project would, would have a impact, as we continue to grow, that impact's gonna grow higher. So that's where those numbers come into play. And we take impact studies from other developments. I get information from Tracy, and we look at what that's, our call volumes, what kind of, how many calls, what type of calls we've answered to a certain development, or what it. or what it may be, and then we put all that in perspective and do our data and then we come up with.
But you're not saying that you can't provide a safe community for, for the citizens. You're nowhere in this letter. You just say this might want to be required, but you can still deliver response time, et cetera, and be there when, when people call. And there may be a delay in the response time, but you still are able to provide.
Yes, we'll be able to provide what's necessary.
I actually, this may be a question, I'm going to pose it. From the, it's been mentioned that the, because of where it's located, that it'll be a little bit more difficult to you to get and navigate to it. Does the same thing apply, because I, like on, I think it's Park, out on Park Road? It's kind of the same distance. Would that be correct to, to say?
That, it would be correct.
Yeah. And how you get there is, is how you get there.
That's correct.
Okay. And I know that Chief Brown had one on, similar, you know, comments related to it, but nothing says they can't deliver the, the services, you know, to keep the community safe. Okay, I've wrapped up my.
Hi, I just got one more question for the applicant regarding the, the letter to the school district. It says, they're awarded on page sixty-four. The construction, the build-out schedule, you said at least two phases, potentially more. They'll begin to commence or commence at twenty-four months following the final zoning approval. Based tools, regardless, if it takes place at twelve months following the previous phase. About a month until you start, once that build-out is complete, is it twelve, twelve months to start the second phase? The third phase, or main phase, is that how much?
That's a good question. Typically, we'll do, we'll do phases, we'll do different phases, like for the mass-grading part, that'll likely be done, it'll likely be mass-grated. And then in some, in some, sometimes we don't do that if we don't have a lot of clearing and whatnot. So I, I, I don't know the specificity of that right now. But typically we'll see these, these, the cycle of development run about every twelve to eighteen months.
Okay. So you do have a land surveying and it says approximately four years from the last build to the beginning of the first build, from first, beginning of the first build to the last build?
That's probably close, yeah. This, this community will go a little faster because you've got multiple product types with multiple home types within the product ranges.
Okay. Any questions for staff or the applicant? All right, good discussion. Last, last panel.
I'm done.
All right, good deal.
Just that the public hearing will take place at your next meeting. And at that point in time, I will go through the standards for rezoning as well.
Thank you. All right, I'll take a motion then, we can close the round.
So moved.
Second.
All right, Allo, paper.
Hi.
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 I like this process so much better.
Oh, yeah.
If we can sit there and ask the questions and get an answer and then go think about it if we want to. And then Paul do a follow-up question. Just to me, so far, it's working really well.
I would agree. I think it's probably one of the better things we've done in a while.
Great idea. Good job, staff.
Appreciate that applicant, appreciate that staff hanging out. Very good. Thank you for the update and the information.
All right.
Are we done?